Okay, we'll call this meeting order. It's a special, special meeting tonight, starting at 6:30. For reasons we'll get into, it's starting as a special meeting. First thing on our agenda, welcome tonight, everybody. First thing is invocation. Do we have Pastor Joseph Prim in the audience? Here, please. Start us in invocation, yes.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father God, we just humbly come to you now, Father, and we just ask for your, your wisdom, your guidance in this gathering, but also for the families here, Father, and their respective families. Bless this, I know you've blessed this city over the years, Father. Continue to do that, Father. Help us to shine your light wherever we go. And I ask a special blessing on the families that are represented here this evening, Father. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. So we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Stand. Do any of the audience who would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
We've got a bunch of youth commissioners here.
We do. All right, all starts off.
I pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. No proclamations today. Next on our agenda is personal appearance, and I believe we have, I have on my agenda Josh Wolfe from the Youth Commission. Talk to us a little bit about your annual presentation. Annual report, it says.
Start off, Josh Wolfe, address 1019 Skyview Drive. Mayor Haynes and the City Commissioners. First, we would like to thank the City Commission for allowing the youth of El Dorado an opportunity to voice their opinions and learn about city government through the El Dorado Youth Commission. Eighteen high school students participated in the Youth Commission this year. Our agenda always includes, A, a report of the City Commission meeting, B, what is going on around El Dorado, C, and finally, C, youth issues. We have enjoyed working with city staff. We would like to give a special thank you to Commissioner Locke. He attends our meetings and explains actions of the City Commission and also answers our questions. For our highlights of the year, we first participated in the Walnut River Festival with our Buckets and Ball game. We gave away ice pops as prizes. The event was well received by all of the kids. Everyone was a winner. We participated in Kids Fest with our Buckets and Ball game once again. We gave each child a chance to win a drawing for a soccer ball. We supplied firework flyers for the fire department to give to all firework vendors this summer. We also participated in the Parks and Recreation Survey. The El Dorado Youth Commission looks forward to working with you all next year. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Thank you. You have, you have, how many of your commission, you have, Youth Commission do you have with you tonight?
Well, I do not take quite a head count, but we got pretty much everyone, I think.
Yeah, I was gonna ask. Would you, would each of them mind coming up and introducing yourself? And also tell us a little bit about what you've enjoyed about being on the Youth Commission.
I'm Brooke Ryan. I just graduated from El Dorado High School, so I'm pretty excited. But I've been on Youth Commission for four years and it's been awesome. And I've got to work with Chase and I got to work with former Commissioner Chapin, so it is awesome getting to know everything about government.
I'm Clarice Bow and this is my third year, and I've loved working with Chase.
I'm Cherokee Regan, and this is my second year on the Commission, and it's nice to know what's going on around El Dorado.
My name is Abigail Edwards, and this is my first year, and I liked how we understood how everything was happening in El Dorado and why.
I am Isaac Har. This is my second year. I've served on the Commission, and I have enjoyed the experience I've learned about the local governments courtesy of Mr. Gardner and his history as a government teacher.
I'm Mary Gomez. This is my first year, and I've enjoyed learning and keeping updated on everything that's happening in the city.
My name is Taylor Brock. This is my first year, and what I really enjoy about being on Youth Commission is the fact that I've never done anything like this before, so it's a new experience.
I'm Hannah Brock. I'm a sophomore. This is my second year on the Youth Commission, and I really like making friends with everyone that's also on the Commission.
I'm Hannah Howery, and this is my second year on Youth Commission, and I enjoy learning about what's going on around the city.
I'm Jessica Baker. This is my first year, and I like the learning experience.
I'm Gretchen Shum, and I liked learning on, learning about what was going on, because I don't usually get to know that kind of thing.
I'm Lauren Larry. This was my first year, and I liked being informed on what was going on, but I also liked working with the kids at the Walnut River Festival and the other things like that.
My name is Sean Leers. This is my second year serving, and I like learning things before my friends on Facebook tell me.
Thank you very much for everything you do. I mean, I, I think my daughter spent some time on Youth Commission, and I know it's, it takes some time out of your schedule, and so I appreciate that. We also know that, that your voices are heard. I think there are some projects in town, around here, over the years, that have been initiated by the Youth Commission, so.
They've come up with some pretty good ideas, very innovative.
So, we do, we do welcome what you, what you have to say. So, thank you, everything for, thanks for everything you're doing.
And a quick thank you to Mr. Gardner, who's the sponsor and really deals with most of the madness. So, thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Well, next on our agenda, we have consent agenda. Public comments is next on our agenda. Thanks, actually. Does anybody from the audience wish to approach, address the Commission? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. So next is consent agenda. Consent agenda includes minutes and such from our last meeting. If anybody had a chance to look these over. Our last two meetings. Any, any questions or comments on the consent agenda? From the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded for the approval of the consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? Hall in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carries five zero. Herb, well, you know, due to our, our time start, we've got a public hearing that's going to be at seven o'clock. So, we're, we'd be moving around in the agenda a little bit until we reach that, that item. Is that right?
Yes. When the public hearing was scheduled, it was, what, a month or two ago? And so, we don't want to start it till seven.
Right.
So just do everything else. When we get to the, those public hearings, we'll start them at seven.
Which is item number five on the agenda? That's the item we need to wait till seven o'clock to start? Everything else is?
Yes.
We can do?
Yes.
At our leisure?
And I think six as well, isn't it? Let me look real quick.
Temporary note, is that a public hearing?
No. So it's just one item?
We grouped them all into one item before. Okay. All right, so next on our agenda, we'll, we'll proceed with application for special use permit.
Yes, Mayor and Commissioners, Fred Silver, who resides at 1013 Cherokee Street, is requesting a special use permit to allow a 1,500 square foot accessory structure on that property. Per our current zoning regs, any structure larger than 1,200 square feet requires a special use permit. A public hearing was held April 23rd in front of the Planning Commission, and no opposition was heard at that meeting, and the Planning Commission recommended approval, six oh.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Any comment or question from the Commission? On Mr. Silver's request?
Sounds pretty, I mean, obviously, the Planning Commission, that was a pretty solid vote.
Didn't sound like any neighbors had a problem with it.
Yeah. Does he want to have any question, I mean, anything?
And Mr. Mayor, I move that the recommendation of the Planning Commission to approve case number 15-004-SUP, requesting a special use permit to allow 1,500 square foot accessory structure in R2 Residential Medium Density District, and that ordinance number?
G 1197?
G 1197 be approved.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for approval. Any further discussion?
This will be a roll call vote?
Yeah, hearing none. We'll do a roll call.
I'm gonna, you have me tonight. We've had a couple problems when, so you got me. The clerk for you, so it'll be a little different. And so if I make a mistake, I haven't done this in a while. Mayor Haynes.
Yay.
Commissioner Locke.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
The ayes have it?
Thank you. Next on our agenda is another item from the Planning Commission?
Yes, Walnut River Brewing, Brewing located at 111 West Locust is requesting a zone change to C2 Central Business District from I1 Light Industrial. They are interested in expanding their current business and include onsite food sales, which is currently not allowed in I1. The Planning Commission held a public hearing April 23rd. No opposition was heard, and the Planning Commi, Commission recommended approval, six zero.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Any comments or questions from the Commission?
Scott?
Yes.
Which direction are they adding on to the building?
Not adding on to the building necessarily, doing interior renovations to allow for food sales potentially. I think that's in their long-term plan. So just contacted the office, started asking questions about if we decided to have food sales. And we talked to them about the rezon would be appropriate. Their current operations in that building right now are allowed by C2.
Allowed by Wright or allowed by special use?
Allowed by Wright. So it's, the C2 is just a much better fit for them. That is within our downtown area. There is C2 directly across north of Locust from them, as well within that same block.
Ordinance number?
G 1198.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve case number 15-003-REZ, requesting a rezoning of 111 West Locust Avenue, El Dorado, Kansas, to C2 Business Central District be accepted, and that ordinance number G 1198 be approved.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded for approval for rezoning of the Walnut River Brewing located at 111 West Locust Avenue. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yay. The next item on our agenda is the public hearing, so not being seven o'clock, fifteen minutes thereto, we will rearrange our agenda and move to item six.
Tammy, are you gonna take?
Temporary note of sale. This is for, this probably ought to act, this is actually tied to that public hearing, so we do need to not, isn't this the?
This is not. This is, this is temporary notes, so short-term financing for a few projects, and I'll go through the projects here with you. Project 295 and 447 are the paving of Tuwanda Avenue. So temporary financing to make construction payments through the duration of that project. 421 and 422 are the paving in the sanitary sewer to serve Belmont Heights Third Edition Phase One. 436 and 437 are the paving and sanitary sewer for Chris Ninth. 443 and 444 are the paving and sanitary sewer for Belmont Heights Third Edition Phase Two. On the new subdivisions, the city will carry these projects under a temporary note for four years to give time for those developments to fill up. By statute, the city's allowed to temporarily finance these projects up to four years before we go to long-term bond financing. The development will incur temporary financing costs while the city is carrying those notes. But it is a tool we, we utilized on these projects to help incentivize new development.
And maybe even a little background on how we do projects. What we normally do is issue temporary financing or finance it internally so that when we go to bonds, we do exactly what we need. The other way is you issue bonds on the front end, you pay for all your improvements, and then you've got to figure out what to do what's left, or if it's short, how you're gonna overcome that. And so this way really makes a lot more sense, and our interest rate on temporary notes is generally really, really favorable. So it's a good deal for us, and it's a good deal for the developer in this case.
Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Herb, any comments or questions from the Commission? I guess I have maybe a question or a comment. This is a temporary note that, do our local institutions get a chance to bid on this temporary note? How is this dealt with?
It is. Providing temporary financing is part of one of the requirements of being the city's bank. We bid banking services every three years, is I think, right?
Yes.
This, this contract allowed for us to bid temporary notes as well, and we did that in this case, and how many bidders did you have?
I want to say five. It was all of our local banks, and maybe one out of state? Or out of town? I don't have the list in front of me, but.
And we had a local lender, successful?
Yes. I believe it is Commerce.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or questions from the Commission? Being none, I would entertain a motion.
What's resolution number?
2758.
Mr. Mayor, I move the resolution number 2758 to resolution authorizing the offering for sale of temporary notes, series 1885 of the City of El Dorado, Kansas be approved?
Second.
He's moving second. Any further discussion? This was just an aye or aye?
Yes, sir.
An aye or aye? Okay. All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. We are on our annual update of quorum, something that we do annually, right?
Yes.
Hence, annual update, right?
And, and you, you do have to do it annually. The Kansas Open Meetings Act states that no majority of a quorum can talk city, uh, government business without declaring a meeting. With a meeting of five, I mean, with a five-person commission, three of you is a majority, is a quorum. Two would be a majority of a quorum. So if you didn't, if you don't change this to four to be your quorum, no two of you could ever talk about city business outside of a meeting. While, while interesting, a lot of stuff wouldn't get done. Because you, you need to visit with your peers about issues. And so the Commission has annually changed the quorum number to four so that two of you can visit. If three of you'd visit, then it's a special meeting if you discuss city business. And so the Commission has annually changed their quorum to be four, and the downside is it takes four of you to have a meeting. But historically, Commissions have not liked meeting a lot without everybody, much less four. And especially if you got down to three, that you'd, that would cause anxiety. So anyhow, that's the background on this, and so if you want to continue that policy, this is your opportunity.
What's the ordinance number?
G 1200.
I move that ordinance number G 1200 and ordinance updating the quorum provision to title, to chapter 2.04 of the City of El Dorado Municipal Code be approved? Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to renew our quorum for the Commission. Any further discussion, questions? I would like to say that I, I tend to agree. I mean, I don't, three is, three is too many to gather and talk, but I think a lot of, a lot of meetings can move more smoothly if we're able to talk amongst ourselves a little bit. It seems to,
And I think.
Down to two would be a bit ridiculous.
The, from my perspective, the different life experiences that the five of you have, you're gonna find that you're gonna benefit from each other's diversity. And so, when we talked about the airport, Dave was who the Commission counted on, because he has a plane and has been flying for 20 or 30 years. And so, it's, there's a big, there's a reason that this, these forms of government work so well. It's because you get five different people, and they have different experiences. And they make good decisions.
Okay, thank you. This is roll call.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Still a little ahead of schedule, so next on our agenda is City Commission meeting ordinance. This is where we officially change this meeting to 6:30 from this point forward without being special.
Correct.
Meeting, right?
Yes, sir. And then, 1201.
If it was my idea, I ought to do this.
Yeah.
Move that ordinance number G 1201 and ordinance to the, to amend City of El Dorado Municipal Code, section 2.04.090, to change the time of the City Commission meetings to 6:30 PM be approved?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to change the meeting time officially. Any further discussion? 5:30 maybe?
Don't give her any ideas.
You'll have to amend that motion.
Moving the meeting to 6:30, I guess I'd take this opportunity to let, to say into the camera that, that would mean from this point forward, Commission meetings on Monday evenings would be moved to 6:30 as official start date, so stay tuned.
I am, as soon as the mayor asks me.
I guess we're ready for a roll call.
Slide right past us and not deal with it, okay?
Roll call.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
I suppose.
I take that as an affirmative?
All right. That brings us to new business. Can we do, I mean, I don't know what pleasure the Commission is, new business. We're probably at seven o'clock, ought to open the public, public hearing. Can we do new business in four minutes?
Just, just so we do it after seven o'clock. We can't do it before seven.
Oh, okay.
Just so we do it after.
Right, is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
All right, well, let's move into new business. Anybody have, this is a chance for the Commission to insert a topic here to talk to.
I just wanted to congratulate Community National Bank. I saw they got their new sign installed, and it looks good.
Very good.
And I don't think it deters from anything. It's very tasteful and, and doesn't have, you know, big action scenes on it, just like they said it would be, and I think it, I think it's cool. So. And the guys were out doing it in the rain, if I remember right.
Anything else?
That's all.
I don't have anything.
I was curious about the flooding last week. I saw a picture in the, in the Times, and wondered if that was the only intersection affected.
We had a lot of rain in a very short period of time, and so did have more than that.
We did have other streets underwater in various locations. A lot of rain really quick. Just outside of the police station Vine and, and First Avenue was affected. The inters, all of First Avenue pretty much was underwater for a time. 12th Avenue, the underpasses were under again, although they drained down very quick. I wasn't on that location. Brad was. He did share with me they drained down pretty quick.
I know you shaved that, took some of that crown out. Did that help any, or?
When I was there, it was coming down so hard and heavy, I could barely see out my window, and by the time I circled back around, the water was pretty much down. There was water close to the threshold of the door on the north side of the business there, and, and as well as the alleys behind. But it went down very, rather quickly. Prairie View out by the golf course was underwater for a little while. We do know we need some drainage work done on the golf course. Trying to think of other locations.
I heard there was quite a bit of water made in Central.
There was. It was, it was, it was, it wasn't really ponding water. It was just that much water running that quick downhill. South Main had some water on it as well. Just pretty much our typical locations where we have water, the ponding in the streets were affected. Went out to some of the new projects recently completed by Public Works and other projects, new street projects that we've done recently. Seem to handle everything okay, so kind of relieved by that. And really expected to get some phone calls today, but I'm only heard from a couple people, so I think everything fared pretty well from what we're hearing and what we saw.
Did the water get into any businesses?
Not that I heard of. I, I heard maybe a few thresholds got wet.
I think Josh.
I think Willie's got some.
Yeah, but that was the only business. Yeah, but that was the only business I've heard about.
How much rain did El Dorado get?
I was asking for that information today. I was more worried about the duration, the duration of the event, how quick it came down and National Weather Service, I think the radar indicated was anywhere from around four to four and a half inches from what I looked at today.
My backyard rain gauge said four.
Yeah, so at the plant.
My backyard looked like four.
Seems to be the consensus right around four.
And I think that the deluge that happened the earlier in the night.
Five o'clock, yeah.
That was, we, I was told one point six two inches in one hour. And so that was just for the one down burst, and then it continued on after that. But that's what, that was the one that caused the biggest problems, I think.
And those type of rains in that short time are really hard to handle. I mean, and I, I think we fared, fared pretty well, in my opinion, from going around and looking at things.
But you had, but there were a bunch of people, unfortunately for staff, the best time to see how everything's draining is when it's raining. And so a bunch of people were out working to understand where we have problems and what we need to do, and so.
Well, I guess I'd like to follow up on the, on the, a little bit about Nick's Avenue there. I would like to say that I think our El Dorado High School graduation went off without a hitch. We had some concern about protesters and they, uh, it was a non-event. We were very, other than the traffic backing up and gawking a little bit at the, at the Freedom Riders, which was glad to see them there. Was without event, and I was thankful for that. And also, I will shout, give a little bit of a shout out to the seniors that graduate, congratulations, and, um, and a new, new experiment, I guess, at the, at the BG Veteran Sports Complex is they had their online party, at least part of it there. There's some seniors in the audience, I hope that went off well. I got about as much sleep as you did, so. Looked like everybody was having a good time, and at two thirty, everybody was ready to go along with the parents, so it's a good time. So, I don't, I don't have anything else? Anything for new business? Oh.
You got that in?
I got that in.
They have any new business?
I said, I said.
Oh, didn't hear you.
Where the noise is.
All right, it is now after seven o'clock, so we'll back up to agenda item number five for the public hearing for projects number three fifty-four, four sixteen, and four seventeen.
Mayor and Commissioners, these projects are complete. We are ready to spread the special assessments to the property. Project three fifty-four was a repaving of Atchison Street, Locust to Cave Springs, and Cave Springs, Atchison to Denver. This was a project that utilized sales tax dollars for the paving, the actual street portion of it. Per our policy, then the property owners are responsible for half of the cost of the curb and gutter and all of the cost of the driveways. So their assessments this evening that you're considering are for fifty percent of the cost of the curb and gutter and the cost of the driveway. Projects four sixteen and four seventeen were streets that were petitioned to the city commission to be improved, which are the paving of Fourth Avenue, School to Boyer, and the paving of Fifth Avenue from School to Boyer. So tonight, you know, hold the public hearing and ask you to consider levying the assessments.
Okay. My apologies, my agenda has been disrupted. Thank you. Okay, I guess we'll open, open the floor now to, to, to public hearing for projects number three fifty-four, four sixteen, and four seventeen. Repaving of Atchison, Locust to Cave Springs, Fourth Avenue, School to Boyer, Fifth Avenue, School to Boyer. Anybody in the audience who wish to speak? Come up to, yeah, please come up to the podium, state your name and, and address, please.
Kim Lawrence, twenty-eight sixty-two West Fourth. I guess it, it's a bit of a surprise to me because I just bought the house in September of twenty thirteen, so I've been there with, while they did the construction and everything, but I didn't realize the cost, that it would wind up increasing per month. From what I understand, we're looking at ten thousand dollars spread out over ten years. And, you know, for a single person, you know, a hundred dollars a month adds up. You know, I just, I didn't know that the neighborhood had petitioned for it. This was the first I'd heard of that, so. I guess, guess my thought is, you know, take a look at, at the cost. I guess it is what it is. And obviously, I'm one of the few people here in the neighborhood, so I'm just, you know, it, it would push me to be able to afford my home. So, I guess that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and we would do it over twenty years. Twenty years.
Okay, thank you. I was gonna ask for that clarification. Yes, sir, state, please state your name and.
Dawn Taylor, twenty-nine fifty West Fourth Avenue. I went to the hearing on Boyer Avenue protesting because it'd be a truck route. I was guaranteed it would not be, but they forgot to tell the truck drivers. We got just as many trucks now. It wasn't built for a truck route. It don't have the bedding, it don't have the concrete, the asphalt. I think somebody ought to be responsible. I don't know who takes care of making sure whatever you guys pass or tell the citizens is the truth. But it's getting harder to believe the city, just like the curb and gutter. Oh, we can't do a one in town without curb and gutter. I take it a lot of them that's put an overlay on, gravel and stuff. No, no curb and gutter. Is it just what the city wants to do on their own, or is it going by the ordinance?
Are those semi-trucks using that road, or are they dump trucks, or?
I'm talking about eighteen-wheelers.
Do you know?
On Boyer.
On Boyer Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He, he's absolutely right. Agree a hundred percent. We've sent police out there to run radar. I, I'm with you a hundred percent. They, we even hired a policeman to work part-time just to do trucks off route, and that's one of the bad spots.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm gonna tell you, we believe he's absolutely right, and, and it's, and we need to do more enforcement. I agree a hundred percent.
Well, when you got four cattle trucks in a row, somebody's gotta notice it.
I'm with you.
And everything from the industrial area goes that away, pipe, trucks, all of it. They go through the school zone. I'm just saying, somebody needs to check and make sure they tell the citizens the truth. Or pretty soon, they're not gonna believe nobody. Same as the curb and gutter. I think everybody should live under the ordinance if they're gonna make it.
I would tend to agree with that.
I'm eighty-one years old now. I'm paying for a street that everybody's using. It's a bypass, it's a truck route, it's everything. I know you can't control everything, but they can sure put up signs or make it tough on them.
Is that, it's marked as not being a truck route?
It is, and, um, the, I think that one of the problems is that a lot of drivers that don't know the area follow their GPS, and while we have told their GPS, the big ones, they don't, they don't, they don't all subscribe to it. The other problem is there, there are drivers that absolutely positively make a choice to drive the route they want and ignore it and risk the ticket. Historically, that ticket has been a hundred dollars, and that included every, and there was no court cost, it was just a hundred dollars. Within the last year, um, we asked the commission to raise court costs, and so it's raised court cost, and this ticket is now between a hundred and five hundred. Do I have a policeman here? No, okay. It's between a hundred and five hundred, and I think the judge has been ratcheting it up. And so, to your point, the only, the only thing that's gonna get their intentions would get in the pocketbook, and the only thing that will get in the pocketbook if we don't sit out there and write them tickets.
Yeah.
And so, um, those are the things that have been going on and, and, uh, and hopefully, we'll get it under control, but you don't, you don't have to drive very often and very far in El Dorado to see a truck off route. So he's, he's a hundred percent right, and, and, and I have reminded everyone when, when there was discussion about moving it, making it a truck route. I remember the conversation and reminded the people talking about it. That can't happen. The people didn't want, wouldn't have approved that road to be a truck route. There was concern about the school, and I mean, that's the reason we have that, the bar, the island in there is just to slow people down because of the fear of the neighborhood about the speed you'd get to going from the, you know, the stop light at that time at Ever, no, I mean, all the way back at Maine, I guess. And, and you'd get, people would get flying, and so the people out there knew it, and they told the commission, and the commission said it won't happen, and, and so it hasn't happened in reality, but there's a lot of people that make that choice. I know you're right.
Well, we're having to pay for it. We're paying for a truck route, we're paying for a bypass. What the commission tells the public, they should back up. And I come, come to that meeting, and that was my worst fear. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, please state your name and address.
Good evening. Chris Hoffman from six oh one South Denver. Um, I'm here to more rather rant and rave about my neighbor, and I was part of project three fifty-four, the repaving of Cave Springs. I want to thank you guys for doing that. It definitely looks a lot better, but over the course of this project, which got started late due to the weather, and it was started in like November, and I just think that that's probably not the best time to start a paving project because we were unable to use our garage for two months during my wife's pregnancy, and it caused a lot of harm and heartache for me. And then also, my neighbor started using my yard as a, as a driveway, and so there are some ruts in there that I've had to deal with. So I just asked the commission and, and that kind of go over how much you're assessing me, and I'm, I'm okay with paying it, I understand that it needs to be done. But I just ask that maybe next time we do a road project, we do it in a better timeframe. Thank you very much.
And I will back Chris up on people driving in the yards. As I was coming down South Denver, going south, all of a sudden, here's this car coming down the sidewalk in the yard, and I'm like, whoa.
It is, it is very frustrating, especially at two thirty in the afternoon when he comes home. And also, we don't have, I'm on the south side. Uh, we didn't have a, um, an alleyway like the folks on the north side did, so it, it was definitely frustrating that we couldn't, you know, even get around and get out of my garage, and we just bought the house in October, so I knew it was coming and I was okay with it, but it was just very frustrating, and I just would like to bring that up to the council. Thank you very much.
And if, and all you have to do, if the ruts, we'll understand, we, we'd come and fix those if you'd asked us.
Okay.
I can't, and to not, I can't help you, but anyone else, um, when we do a project, we tell everyone
that we'll, we'll get you in and out, and so if. Okay.
I don't know how you work, but anyone else on the next project, understand, if you call us, we will absolutely understand and make sure you can always get in and out. Now, there will be moments, but there won't be days.
Okay.
Because at, at the end of work every day, we want people to be able to get home, and so there has to be discussion, and I apologize for not happening enough, but we absolutely would have you getting in and out of your garage. We could have done that.
Okay.
And so, and so I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Lautis Lauter Hernandez, and I live at eleven thirty-six South Summit. And I was here before at the commission meeting on some of these things I'm gonna bring up to you today. Mr. Badway may recall some of this because he's the only one that was on the commission at that time. That's still here, that is, anyway. I received a notice of hearing on the statement costs for, to be assessed at forty-eight, twenty-eight forty-two West Fourth Avenue. Now, I had had several meetings, and I'm not gonna question the veracity, honesty, or whatever they want to call it, but it seems to me like either I misunderstood them completely, or I was misled completely on what possibility assessment would be there. I'm also going to talk to you about flooding up there that's being caused by the street that was put in because they said that the guttering and paving of that road would eliminate a lot of that flooding on my place. Well, it was worse. This is the first time we've had rain since twenty thirteen when we had the discussions of any amount. And we pumped water, and we pumped water, burned out one pump, brought in another one. And the main thing I'm concerned is the amount of the proposed assessment on twenty-eight forty-two West Fourth is twelve thousand dollars rounded off. That's quite a hike. I went by there to check, to see where the gold plating was at, and I didn't see any. But I think that's quite excessive. That is twenty percent of what I paid for that property. Now, I know that you say that I have twenty years to pay for it, but twenty years, a hundred years, two years, if I feel it's excessive, then I, in my opinion, it's excessive, and that's the reason I'm here. Not because you won't give me enough time to pay for it. And when you're, when you're eighty years of old and you on social security, I had a big increase this year. They increased it one dollar. And of course, they increased Medicare twenty. So actually, I, I ended up owing them nineteen dollars more. It makes it difficult to meet, and I did have some houses prior to the time I retired, which was, you know, income that I needed so I could survive. Now, I don't know if you can do anything about it or not. This is the proposed assessment.
So that would raise your payment fifty dollars a month for the next twenty years?
Pardon?
That would raise your payment tw- fifty dollars a month for the next twenty years?
Yeah, at six hundred and some a year.
You think it, you thought it was approximately twenty percent higher than what was on, when they, than was, what was on the proposed assessment on the petition?
Well, at least my understanding at that time was. Well, at least my understanding at that time was, now I'm told that it's the same figure they gave me here. And that's what they showed me. But that's the reason I said, I don't know if I totally misunderstood them or if I was totally misled.
Mr. Hernandez's property is being assessed, um, the same amount that was on the, on the petition in the initial estimate. So the same exact dollar amount.
Because on April the first, I believe, or April, the first part of April, they had a, a meeting about this on twenty thirteen and I came over. And that's when I'm saying I, you know. And maybe I'm not educated enough to understand everything they say.
Well, I think you're plenty educated enough.
But I'm like the lady that just was up here.
Yeah.
You know? That's, that's excessively high. I don't think that I could sell that house, people knowing that it would be that, have much more taxes.
Uh, Mr. Hernandez, pardon me. Um, thank you for your comments. Couple of questions that I have.
Okay.
Mentioned your residence was eleven thirty six South Summit.
Correct.
And this is at twenty eight forty two West Fourth?
Correct.
Is this an investment property, a rental property?
Well, originally I was gonna move up there, but I.
So it's sitting empty now?
No, it wasn't that accessible. At that time I was fairly crippled.
Okay. All right. And I guess my, my comment about the flooding, uh, I, I would, that would disappoint me that we build a new street and end up with a, a bigger problem for you. Um, is this something Herb that we can have staff work with him on to find out really what's going on? Cause if there's something that needs to be rectified, I think that.
Well, uh, let me add a little bit more. Originally, when I agreed for them to finish out the six and a half, eight foot of width of cement to complete the drive completely, we were, we were, we were discussing of putting a grid underneath so the water would come down and drain out to the side and go over. Well, at that time they said they were gonna change the drainage of the water systems. Because I did have a drainage ditch also on the east side of the house. That also prevented water from standing in the yard and it went out. Well, they said that they, they were gonna put a big pipe in there to carry the water out and gonna cover it. And they were gonna put grids on top so that I wouldn't get any of that water. The grids are there, but the grid under the driveway was never put in because I was assured that the water, if it'd come down, it would go right over toward the west side and going out. Well, it's not happening.
Okay. Scott, are you aware of this?
Yeah, I would appreciate, yeah, give me a call, cause I must have not saw it. I was out there about five minutes after it quit raining hard. And, uh, and I guess I must have missed it, cause I didn't, I didn't see issues.
And then, I mean, we talked about hooking your downspouts up. Did that happen, Scott?
Yeah, I, I hooked all the downspouts up.
Okay.
But you were, we were talking about hooking the downspouts into that pipe.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, cause there were three spouts that went into it.
We, we hooked your sub pump into the storm sewer system as you requested. And, um, your, your downspouts, we were unable to do because the gutter had fallen off the house on the east side.
On the east side. It shouldn't have been downed because I had that all put in new. Fact is they didn't wanna put, um, metal. They wanted to put, uh, plastic stuff, you know, the T V C stuff.
But I, I'd be happy to meet you out there and any, anything you see work towards an end.
Well, you said you were there about five minutes afterward and didn't see anything. Well, my renter was over at the house wanting to get another pump because that one was burning out. It was pumping so consistently.
From the basement?
Yes. Cause I have two big pits in the basement with pumps on them, you know, in case that would happen.
And I think, don't we, don't we drain it both ways? Doesn't, were his house, I mean, doesn't, and there's a swale in the back to take it to the west? And then there's the ditch on the east to take it away?
There's a, the, uh.
There's supposed to be, but the one on the north side, when they built that up, it just doesn't do it anymore because the flow's not hard enough. The flow's not hard enough. It used to be that the flow was hard enough that it would never come that close.
But I, you know.
I'll, I'll get together with you.
We'll, we'll, we'll come up in the rain and we'll look at it. We'll get her fixed.
Okay. The other thing that I wanna bring up right now is merely, I guess, a request from an old fellow that it's too muddy to get in and mow the grass. And probably by tomorrow that thing will grow four inches. And I would rather the city wouldn't really be that tough on older people. I, I have mechan- mechanical stuff that'll mow it. But I know a lot of older people in my own block, they'd go out with that push mower. And I tell you, if it's damp and wet like it is now, it's tough. They just can't get it done. Then I'm not asking that for me, I'm asking.
Sure. So this falls into the, uh, the zoning, uh.
Codes?
Codes, yes.
And, and all we do is, it's a conversation. And so if someone can't and they tell us, that's, we, we get la- we give people latitude. And in fact, we get lots of complaints from neighbors for being too kind. That may be hard to believe, but.
They've always been real good to me, so you know.
And so that's our, that's the way we operate. Um, but we do have people that if the city didn't mow it, it wouldn't get mowed. And, and we do that too unfortunately. But our, we, uh, we try to be understanding and, um, I mean, we got a garden right now need to be mowed and so.
Then one other thing I have to, of bringing up, but the gentleman that right before me, uh, I happen to go up there on Fourth Street and check fairly often. And believe you me, to get on that street west, on West Fourth, you're just taking your life in your hands. I mean, you either have a fast vehicle that you can drag race with or give it up. So I generally turn around and come back on school road. I appreciate your time and I sure thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the audience you'd like to address the commission in public session?
Since he's, since he was on the topic, um, Jim Morris. Uh, since he was on the topic of coming off Fourth Street onto Boyer, there really is a problem with those cedar trees. Um, we've got, as you're, as you're pulling on, um, it would be to the north side, they've got a row of cedar trees planted out there and you can't see people coming around that curve. It is helpful to have that center lane. But I noticed recently that somebody on the south side is getting ready or has just planted, um, seedlings of cedar trees. So it's gonna be the same way down there. And if you can't see left or right, we're gonna have some bad accidents. Thank you.
Would agree. Thanks. We've got a triangle of vision typically associated with intersections, do we not?
Yes. And so it's just comments, we don't get them all, so thank you for telling us and we'll get out there and, and get them.
And I guess, um, this, this obviously Boyer Road's not a residential street. And then you might, we might talk about the policy associated with residential versus, this is a collector's street likely?
It, and it is a collector, I think.
It is.
So, um, these residents didn't pay for a collector's street? They paid for residential street?
They, they paid for residential streets similar to, I mean, the exact same makeup of what Fourth and Fifth Avenue is. Boyer Road, um, the extra width was paid for the city, by the city at large. Just, just because of the potential of traffic volumes years down the road, and I'm not talking trucks. The pavement section was reinforced, um, to a higher standard than a residential. So the city at large picked up that tab as well. In fact, Fourth and Fifth Avenue, the, the bids, uh, came in higher than what we had originally estimated. And, um, and, and came back to the commission at that time and had a discussion. And, and the prior commissions have always committed to whatever the petition or the initial assessment is, that's what we're gonna stick to. And that's what we've done on this Fourth and Fifth project. So the cost did come in a little higher. Um, a majority of that, I would say, was associated with the storm sewer. But the overall paving cost did come in higher than what we originally projected, which, uh, fortunately doesn't happen often at all, but it did in this case.
Okay. Well, I guess I wanted to, to make sure we understood that even though paying for a residential street and getting trucks on it, the city at large picked up the difference for the.
And it was built, it was built stouter. What, a normal, a normal residential's six and six?
Yeah.
It's six inches of asphalt, six inches of crushed rock.
Okay.
This road was built.
Nine inches of asphalt and, and a bit more of, um, a subgrade, aggregate subgrade and then some modification to the dirt as well.
Okay.
So while don't want trucks on it, it's not necessarily gonna tear it up. And I think the, uh, one of the things that kinda I was gonna visit with you about anyway is to, um, to the point of, of, um, Mr. Taylor, uh, we do have some roads that have been chip sealed over the, over time. And the city's policy is that we don't do maintenance on non-city standard roads. And so prior to me coming, we would chip seal them from now, time and again. We have followed the commission's policy. The commission is not varied on this is the way we wanna do business. And so that's what we've done. And so one of the things I was gonna talk to you about, my manager's report, and I'll just mention it now. And you can take care of this item is, uh, milling some of those roads that are in really bad shape that we cannot fix. And so you're gonna hear a little more about that. But, but I agree with Mr. Taylor on that as well.
Okay. I think, um, we've been kinda varying, we've had some discussion here. Probably oughta close the public hearing. If there's any, anybody else from the audience you'd like to come up and speak on this issue? Not seeing anyone will close the public hearing on, on this item. Thank you very much for those who came in. Okay, public hearing's been concluded. Um, any, any comments associated with the commission on this issue? I guess my, my comments are, would, would be to give directive to the staff to, to look into the, those residents and the extra flooding and Mr. Hernandez and, and the particular attention to that being a truck route. If that's the, if that's the case and it's causing them grief. And then the, the triangle of vision on those intersections with plantings. Um, and make sure that those residents and those corner lots understand what, what, uh, what that's about. That'd be my directive coming out of this public hearing.
I'd agree with all that.
That is, that's normal. So we'd be happy to take care of those.
I got a question for you, Herb.
Yes, sir.
Can we put truck routes on the work session? Cause I got some stuff I wanna talk about to you guys on our work session.
Oh, sure you can.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
The, the spreadsheet that we got, that is a total amount that these properties are being assessed.
Correct.
And this is over twenty years.
Correct.
And it's on their property taxes.
Correct. It will go to, after tonight, it will be certified to the county in August. So then it will be, um, show up in the assessment on when the December taxes come out, the following year.
And then.
In fifteen.
And Commissioner, if you want us to do any work in preparation for that, just let us know. If there's something you wanna talk about.
Yeah.
Okay.
When he was saying cattle trucks, there was, there was a cattle company that talked to me about, about, uh, uh, Central and Everhill. And a fifty-three footer truck, fifty foot, fifty-three foot trailer cannot make that turn. The cars are coming south on, on Everhill. If they're turning at the same time, south, they have to wait till the cars clear the intersection. Then they can go out and make that turn because that light pole is right in the way. They'll take that light pole out as they're making the turn to go north on.
Okay. We'll look at it and be ready to talk about it.
Yeah.
I think I have an answer for you too, so.
Do you wanna take care of this piece of business?
Yeah, let's take care of this piece of business before we get off.
And then we can do something else.
Thanks. I, uh, we're at a point where, uh, any other comments from the commission?
G eleven ninety-nine.
Mr. Mayor, I move that G eleven ninety-nine in ordinance levying special assessments on certain property to pay the cost of internal improvements in the city of El Dorado, Kansas, and heretofore authorized by resolution numbers two seven four five, two seven one six, two seven three seven, two seven one seven, and two seven three six of the city in providing for the collection of such special assessments. Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Being none, uh, roll call?
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes.
Commissioner Badway?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
Yes.
Mayor Haynes?
Yes.
Commissioner Locke?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, we're down to see manager's report, I think.
How about we have Scott talk a little bit about, if you know what, what we need to do, tell Commissioner Lewis.
The, um, there is a median that sticks out. And I believe you're talking about on Central Avenue as you're turning northbound on Everhill Road with the light poles sticking around.
When they come out the trucks, the, the truck goes, actually will go over that, that median there.
The, uh, in part of, um, uh, a commercial development that's going to happen at the corner of the northwest corner, Everhill and Central, those medians will be changed in front of that business. Um, so, so working with their engineer right now about the possibility of taking down that light pole and sucking, uh, moving that median further to the west, that's something, uh, not necessarily on, on my radar. But, uh, um, Mr. Prather from Grandike had brought it to KDOT's attention. And we'd all discussed that, but yeah, this would be an appropriate time if we can take care of that, so.
They were asking if you'd move it back eighteen feet to make the curve.
I, I think we're looking at, um, potentially getting it behind the, at least the crosswalk. And I'm not sure that distance off the top of my head, but.
When the trucks go up there and they go to turn, they get caught up there because the cars are turning to go towards the college. And it holds up all the other trucks and makes the traffic back up through there. They can't make the turn.
Okay. So we may have it, we may have it working, we're working on it.
Good. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
The, uh, I did wanna again talk about, we have some streets in town that have had some very thin layers of melon, melon overlay or, uh, chip seal products. So they're not city streets. They have no curb and gutter. They have no stormwater and they've just developed over time. Several years ago, the commission allowed us to buy a machine that milled them up. And we have turned streets that were failing, that were not city streets into gravel. And then we run a motor grader down there and then we can do maintenance and take care of them. When we first started doing that, um, created quite a shock. And, um, and so I asked staff to quit doing that and let, let's give everyone a chance to get used to this. But, um, we have some streets that we really cannot take care of. The base has failed. We need to do something. They haven't petitioned the commission to turn them into. They haven't petitioned the commission to turn them into real streets. I'm guessing you get to drive on one of them every day. Um, and I'd like to do that to Oak. I think, um, Oak is, uh, failing the, the part that's part of the truck route. So to service the railroad facilities and your facility, I think, um, takes, it, it takes big vehicles. And there's no real road there to take them. So, um, it's a mess, and there's no, short of turning it into a real city street, there's no good solution for it. So I'd like to turn it into gravel until we can, uh, because we can maintain gravel. We can put gravel in, and what would, I, no, I'd guess we'd use millings, but I don't know that.
Yeah, I think millings, less dust.
Ah, yeah.
And it's on hand, we have...
So, um, unless I hear some negative thoughts, I think we want to mill up some more streets and, and try to get people a smoother street. And that's certainly the, the cheapest, easiest way to produce that. And it still meets the city's policy on roads and their upkeep that you've had for as long as we can find records.
Are you going to have a public hearing on that, or are you, we just going to do it? Because there's certain people in that neighborhood that are just going to not be very happy about that.
Uh, yeah, I absolutely know it, and, um, the, but every time I drive on it, I mean...
It gets worse, yeah.
The only, the only thing that, that's good about it is you literally couldn't drive above the speed limit on it. Um, because there's no telling where you'd end up. The, uh, and, and I guess I'm bringing it today because, um, it just keeps getting worse, especially that section just to the south of Twelfth. And, um, and I think those people deserve a smooth road. They're not ready to be a city street yet, and so this is the way I can deliver that product. I don't, I don't like it, no, but, but that's only one of them. That's probably the worst one I know about.
Yeah, we have trouble with the dust in the area, and, uh, the neighbors all complain about the dust, but the dust is coming from the railroad property. It's not coming from our property, but we go ahead and put millings down to control the, the dust in the area as a, as a good neighbor for that, for that area there. But, uh, and when you turn that all into, to millings and the dust starts picking up from there, the rest of them are all going to start complaining about it too.
It's, it's a, it's a bad situation, and, and the, I mean, I hate to say it, but it'd be an improvement. Gravel road there today would be an improvement over what they have.
It's got some big chuck holes in it.
It, it is an improvement, and cold, cold patch is expensive too.
And, and I think that, again, the fact that it doesn't have a good base, and with moisture, you're just getting clay, and it's moving, and it's further getting more clay in it, and, and you can't, you can't manage it.
Right.
And so we can manage gravel. We can manage gravel.
Do we have a precedent for that anywhere?
I mean, we've done it, um, we've done it never, and, and it just, it was a huge change when we did the first streets, but we've done a lot of streets. We've done them over by the old stadium. Those were all put back to, to gravel. We did, uh, Griffith.
Ninth.
Ninth. I mean, so we've done a lot of roads to improve them. But, but my experience is people get used to little things, they don't get used to big things. And so, so I wanted a gap. And, um, I know some of the neighbors up there have been trying to petition it for quite a while and haven't had any success. And so that kind of put, put this off long, as long as it was, just because I kept hoping that a petition would come in. And, uh, and again, the truck route portion, we would design to handle trucks. And so it'd be, it'd be built probably out of concrete, certainly thickened asphalt and gravel, and so...
We've, we've talked about that road as Representative Ergon. We've talked about that street out there, and if we'd be willing to help you with the road out there, oh, we're not going to pay the whole thing.
Okay.
It needs to, you need to talk to the neighborhood and see what they want to do, and we'll be, we'll be willing to help out. And upgrade that road up to a blacktop if that's what you want. We've already talked about doing that.
So now I know of at least two people that want it.
Yeah, because it's our trucks that run up and down that road. But it's also the railroad, and you're not going to get nothing out of the railroad. So, but it is my semi trucks that run up and down, and it's got to be approved for a semi truck, or you're going to have the semi truck rolling off in a ditch there. I don't want that to happen.
Nope.
So...
And I, and, and in a turning radius, we haven't, you know, we haven't designed it yet, but concrete, I'd rather you wear tires than roll asphalt on a hundred-degree day. So I'd, I'll be real surprised, and given that it's coming up that hill, I'd be surprised if we don't pour concrete, at least on part of it. I don't know how much of it, but the coming up that hill, coming out of that intersection, I like a concrete street.
My conservative, Mr. Bergman, he takes such good care of his property right there at the corner, and he's been very patient on everything. And to make that gravel, I think that would just irritate him, so...
Well, maybe we can look at doing the north part, doing it to the train tracks. Maybe that'd, of course...
Or just visit with the neighborhood?
Okay. Well, we're going to work on it some more.
Okay.
The next thing I wanted to mention, I sent out an email about having our work session is, has been on the budget calendar for Wednesday, next win, next Wednesday, next Wednesday. I believe the mayor has a conflict, and, and I think Tuesday worked for you, is that...
Thursday.
Thursday works for you.
Is coming Thursday?
No, uh, ten days.
Week from Thursday, okay.
Actually, Tuesday or, now, now that I look at my calendar, a change based on today, Tuesday or Thursday work, the twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth, but the twenty-seventh, and I'd prefer the twenty-eighth if we could do that.
Twenty-sixth wouldn't work for me, but the twenty-eighth would. Could work for the others.
Is that...
I can make the twenty-eighth work.
Twenty-eighth would be fine.
There you go. So now that's set. And then I wanted to also visit with you a little bit about if, um, we talked early on about having a retreat once you kind of got your feet wet, and, and, uh, even after two months, they're just really dipping the toe in. I mean, it's, we do a lot of stuff. But, um, have any of you given any thought, or would you give some thought to, um, what we discuss, what you envision for the time spent? It's, it's often, um, you use it as kind of a guide to direction. And, uh, we've done them before with that. We've done them before where it talks about, um, commission role, staff role, and how those things work together, and used it kind of as a training session. We've done them before that talk about, um, how, how you all interact. And so if you've given it, if you give me some direction, then I'll know how to proceed. And then I was thinking, um, then I think you have some conflicts for a while, and so I was thinking maybe towards the end of June, does that make, does that work?
Anytime after the twentieth of June.
After the...
Anytime after the twentieth of June.
Okay. So that, so that's kind of when I'm thinking. So you don't have to decide anything tonight, and if you...
Can we email you some thoughts?
You can absolutely, any way you want to communicate.
Email some thoughts, and I guess I would like to, to prime that a little bit. I, I think it's always good to be reminded, some of the, the, uh, chain of command and, and process of communication. I think that's something we should do. But I really would like to use this session as a chance to kind of review our strategic plan and what kind of goals, what goals we're coming up on, what goals we've clicked off for the past few years, and, and, uh, what new goals this commission would like to talk about. So give thoughts to that. I think everybody has a copy of the long-range plan, strategic plan for the city. So if you could spend some time, if we all spend some time looking through that and, uh, uh, use that as the springboard for what we might have discuss, discussion within a retreat. I'd like to come out of there with some handful of goals that we can try and accomplish or, or deal with as a commission. All right?
The only other thing I wanted to say is that as we think about, as people think about serving in the youth commission, it seems to me like they got, it got a good advertisement today from about twenty people, um, on its worth, and, um, visited just a little bit with Mr. Gardner before the meeting. And they, uh, they want to be involved in both the park master plan and, and as that's coming along, there's been discussion about disc golf. Um, there's been, internally, we've talked about disc golf, and now the youth commission has talked about disc golf and wants to be engaged in that conversation. So we're going to engage them in those discussions, and, and, um, I, one of the first mistakes I made is the city managers put a playground in a park without asking the kids who play in it. And while they love that piece of equipment, it's right in the middle of their baseball field that was just unmarked, but all the kids came and knew where home plate was and first and played baseball in it. And so we moved it. And so, um, I try not to make that mistake again. And so them wanting to be involved in disc golf, um, is great because I don't think I'm going to play it. But, um, it, it's an exciting sport that lots of people like, and we need to have those people helping play in for it.
Good.
I got one other comment that a gentleman was asking me about today was on the summer league baseball. Can we set up another extension to that where it goes into the fall? Because the kids don't have anything to do after it gets over with the first session. And they want to know if they could carry another league on into the fall with the kids.
We'd love to have fall ball, um, and just tell them, call us and tell us. If we can get enough kids to play fall ball, we'll absolutely play fall ball.
Okay.
Because, and you may know this, but maybe some people don't. To really be really good at baseball, you need to play it year-round. And almost if you want to be competitive at the next level, there aren't very many of us that are good enough to do multiple sports. And so, um, and then get free education out of the deal. And so, uh, I'd, I'd love to have them play summer ball, fall ball.
This would be youth league, the kids.
Right. And that'd be, and, and that way they get to keep playing and, um, can really refine those skills and then keep playing. So we'd love to do it, we just need some more participants.
Okay.
Do you have more in your report, Herb?
No, sir, I'm completed.
Thank you for that. Next on our agenda is executive session. For the purposes of discussing legal matters, Jim, how much time?
About thirty minutes, please.
Thirty minutes? All right. We will retire to executive session for thirty minutes, which means, I can't see the clock.
Eight twenty-five.
Mister Mayor, I move we adjourn into executive session for the purpose of discussing legal matters
and to reconvene the regular meeting at eight twenty-five.
Second.
Okay. Move to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All in favor, same sign, five zero. Thanks.